The incipient quantity of money needed to start the fund while you're going to the bond people, and if you drop one area down, you're gonna have to raise another area. So there's no, nobody's gonna benefit by switching. Maggie, I made a statement of what I think you think. Am I right in what I think you think?
Thank you, Alderman Lewitin. I do agree that what I was attempting to do was make this fund more solid financially, for various reasons, okay? All of which I believe the council accepts. Some changes could be made in this. This is the beauty of Excel spreadsheets. You can write a formula, and you can link things together, and you can make a few changes, and it will all recalculate itself. And I'm sure Mr. Wilson, well, he's not shooting daggers at me, I'm sure Mr. Wilson would be happy to make those changes and show you the difference. And perhaps what I hear you saying is, okay, if we did a flat rate for sewer, this is what the dollar amount would be. If we tied it to our normal usage, this is what it would be. What's the difference in dollars and in percentage? That's what you, you wanna see that. And then you wanna see, what would my total water and sewer bill be under this tiered proposal and under something different for sewer, for various levels? So that you can, you can decide about its impact. He can do that, and he can recalculate this worksheet. Those numbers on the bottom will change, but then you can see, you can clearly see what the differences are. What we really were attempting to do tonight, because we had, this had been put off so many times, was to finally look at our consumption by type and by class and by types of usage. When Alderman Shaki brought up the Great Lakes Initiative, this has to be six, eight months ago, I couldn't have told him what percentage of people used less than 7,000 gallons. We didn't have any way to pull that out of our system. And now we can, we can do that in a, in a better fashion, so, and we can even begin to track it to see if, if you were to enact these rates, if they were having an impact. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's a framework, it's a strategy, it's a proposal for you to think about, and it is a lot to digest, I realize that, but I think probably you would be well-served by seeing some more comparisons between the different scenarios, and then you could probably make a decision.
Mr. Coles?
Yes, I think we should, we should agree with Maggie and agree with the city manager that we should take some sort of vote on this, because otherwise, we're just gonna throw this, this thing's gonna be foballed for three or four different meetings before we arrive at anything. And she's put all this work in, and they put up, this has been going on for at least a year that we, I know of, and some of these people weren't here when we didn't know who was getting what and what was getting who. One woman had a $124,000 water bill that she refused to pay. And I think we should, we should allow the city manager, and we agree with Maggie, to vote on something tonight, because otherwise, it's gonna be months before we get this thing straightened out. Because you want something, he wants something, somebody else wants something, let's arrive at one thing, and then we can work from there on. We can always change it.
Mr. Cadella?
All right, let me find the place in the middle where I agree with both Alderman Coles and Alderman Police. I think let's, I like the idea of taking the vote to get a direction for staff to move in, but I really would like then for staff to take the results of that vote, put some preliminary samples together for us of numbers, so that at the next committee meeting, we can, we can see if the decision we made here tonight still makes sense. Rather than table it without finishing discussion, without giving them direction, I think we can come back with two, another meeting with, with some numbers, some samples, some sample households, some sample businesses, small and large, and then take it from there. So I think, I like both ideas.
Okay, Mr. Coles?
I've got one more thing to say. Everybody on this, on this council gets a water bill. Why don't you, everybody bring the water bill in and see where, where it is? And that way, you can decide by looking at your water bill, what you wanna do.
Mr. Police?
Again, I agree with Alderman Lewitin that this is an enterprise fund. We need to have money in that fund so we can do water projects. And I'm not looking to completely destroy your plan here. I would just like to see some numbers, so, I like things black and white. Right now, you know, I was doing some math, but that's all I'm looking for. Just, you know, staff can go forward as long as they show us some samples. This way, we know, you know, we're saying when a resident comes up to me, "How much more is that gonna cost me?" Uh, I don't know. That's not the right answer they wanna hear. So I wanna at least be educated when I answer.
Alderman Schork?
Yeah, can we look at the sewer rate proposal you have here? That sheet? Do you have it in front of you? I'm not sure I understand that one. I understand the water tier system, but I'm not sure I understand this one.
Okay, well, the residential sewer is a fixed rate. It does go up every year, but it's fixed.
Fixed that, no, that 50 for 2009, 2010, the 53.21 is a monthly rate?
That's a monthly charge.
That would be for every residential?
Every residential, that's right.
That would be like tripling what I get now.
For sewer?
Yeah.
And I think that's what several other Aldermen have made the point about, that when it's tied to usage, it would be substantially less. So what, what Mr. Wilson will have to do is change that number and see what effect it has on the bottom line, okay? It is a big number.
The number is though, is not that much different from the light industrial or food service.
Well, it is, because they're paying per 1,000 gallons.
But, but 10,000 gallons is 78.20, and the homeowner would be paying 53.21. So it's only a $23 difference, and that would be a, and then you have a flat rate for light industrial.
Everybody pays, yes. Right now, you know, you pay your sewer bill so much per 1,000, plus you pay $2.70.
Well, this would be in addition to the other.
That's for the industrial and the food service, not for residential. Okay? And between the, if you compare the residential to the sewer, 78.20 compared to 53.21, that's a 50% increase. That's a fairly hefty difference between residential and industrial.
But what I'm saying is that you have customers, commercial customers, that are using 50,000. So you'd have to multiply that 782...
They'd pay $7.82 by 50.
Okay, the only thing I, I wanna make sure is that we don't push businesses out of Wooddale by increasing one item so much that they're gonna look at that and focus in on that and say, "I wanna go someplace where it's cheaper to do business."
Well, probably, probably the best thing to do then is to, is to give the staff direction on the water rates, because those, those appear to, to be pretty much a consensus. And have Mr. Wilson calculate using the way it's always been done, and then the way it's being proposed.
Good.
So you can see those differences. You'll see it by percentage, you'll see it by dollars. And then, and that will be the part that'll get refined before the ordinance is put before...
Yeah, I guess it's saying the same thing Alderman Police is saying. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson?
Two motions would be appropriate to keep this moving forward. The first motion would be to direct staff to develop a tiered rate water billing system.
I was gonna make two motions, Mr. Mayor, if you will let me. My, my motion is that I agree, there's, there's just too much, everyone's not on the same page on this, and until we, I don't wanna give the right for the city council to go ahead and have a turn and draw up ordinance, and then we just nickpicket. I really would like to see some numbers, to compare numbers on a sewer and water. So my recommendation is, my motion is gonna be that we table this to the next, not table it, but bring back the numbers, example numbers, to the next committee meeting, which we all will take action on the next committee meeting with the numbers. We are not going to pass this six months down the line. We have to vote on it next committee meeting. That's gonna be my motion on the floor, if, if there's a second on that motion. Motion on the floor, second question on motion?
That's not debatable.
Well, I'm tabling it, but I'm giving staff direction to move forward with, to get some numbers.
But there is no discussion on that motion.
Okay, that's fine. Do you have the direction? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Okay, someone else make a motion then. Good.
I make a motion that we give staff direction to come up with a tiered proposal. And I think, I think it was, we should have a fifth tier at a higher, at a higher rate, maybe at 50,000. So I make a motion that we direct staff to come up with a tiered proposal that has five tiers, one that affects the high industrial users. Do I have a second?
No.
Isn't that the same thing?
No, I'm not asking to table.
No, you're still coming back to city council committee for recommendation. So what, I mean, where are you going with that? We still gonna have to come back next month, even if we table it with the numbers.
Mayor, would you take over?
First of all, Mr. Lewitin, it's my committee, and Mayor, explain it to us, because I think a table, what he just said, is almost what I just made a motion on the floor.
As I understood, the first motion, it was to ask staff to bring back numbers, but it didn't make the decision whether you are or are not adopting the tiered rate system as a policy matter. The second motion directed staff to develop the numbers pursuant to a tiered rate system. So you made that basic decision to do a tier, to adopt the proposal for a tiered rate system with the second motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Police.
With this motion, are we now directing the attorney to drop, so it's basically the same thing? It's not the same thing? Okay, no problem.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose. Roll call, please.
[laughing].
Roll call, please.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
No.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Passes?
We will bring this back to you at the next committee meeting with a five-tiered concept incorporating the 50,000, and we will also give you some examples of residential and commercial and industrial users in terms of what they're paying now versus what they're paying if this is adopted. Is that privileged information? May we, can we identify companies by name as an example?
No.
Or should I, should we just, this is a company that does such and such and uses so much water?
Mr. Manager, we've never identified customers before, and I, it's a legal question whether you can, you can do it or not, but I'm not sure that that's necessary. I think it's mostly, we can now say we have X amount of users who use 150,000 gallons, and that's more than adequate to do this analysis.
We'll do that in that fashion, and we'll have it back to you at, at the next committee meeting.
Thank you. Mayor?
May I suggest a second motion to again give staff direction? Are you agreeing with the proposal for a flat rate sewer system, or are you continuing to tie the sewer to gallons used? I think you need to make that basic policy decision, too.
I make the motion to tie into use of water.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second question? Winger?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Motion on the floor is to leave the sewer rate the way it is with the usage charge and not a flat rate.
Okay, thank you.
That is the motion on the floor. There's a second on the floor?
Roll call.
Any other? Brad?
Would it be the wish of the council for the sewer rates to be tiered as well, or just one rate?
They're tiering right now.
They're tiering right now.
So you're going by this, but not a flat rate?
Well, the sewer rates currently are one rate for residential, one for food service, one for light industrial. The rates in the proposal are a fixed fee for all residential, and then separate for light industrial and food service. So we either need to know whether you want the sewer fees to remain one rate for all residents regardless of consumption, or to mirror the tiered system that the water rates are going to, to go through as well, which would make it also be a five-tiered system.
Tiered system. I would amend my motion.
The secondary does not agree for the reason that typically the residential use at any given household could go up during a period of time when they're using water for irrigation. So I don't like the idea of tiering it at the residential level for that reason. Because you may jump from Class A to Class, Class 1 to Class 2, and now you're paying more money for sewer rate, and you're not even dumping the water in the sewer. It's not always gonna work that way, though, so I don't know.
Okay. Well, man, I never had this happen. Mayor, if the secondary don't agree, where do I go then?
The motion stands as it was, if there's no agreement to amend it.
Okay, Mr. Police?
All right, the motions for the tier, just the way we have it here, but you don't want the flat rate, is what you're saying. Right? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Right, I mean, the flat rate, like I said before, can be lowered. Again, if we see those examples, it would, it would definitely explain things a lot, a lot more clear, I mean...
Brad?
One thing that we could look into as well, if, if there is an aversion to, and rightfully so, I suppose, to the low-end user having to pay the extremely high flat fee a month if you're only using a couple thousand dollars. We could, in theory, go through, and the flat fee, you know, we could say it's based on an average of 10,000 gallons a month. That fee would go from 53 to say, and I'm just pulling this out of thin air here, up to like $56 or $57. We can then go through and then charge per 1,000 gallons, you know, per usage, up to this certain threshold, at which case the flat rate would kick in. So the lower-end user would get the benefit of not being charged as much for the high-end user in the residential scheme, especially in cases of irrigation, things of that nature, wouldn't go over this flat rate threshold. I don't know if that would be something that might, might help.
So what you're saying is instead of doing a flat rate, you tiered a flat rate fee?
You would set a cap, I guess if you will, on the sewer charge, and you would go gallon for gallon up into the cap, and then at that point, you would be, you would be done.
Mr. Police?
Just to clarify, Brad, let's say you're in Tier 1, we do $35 flat fee. Tier 2, $45, and then it caps at $53 if you're in Tier 3 or 4 as a resident. Is that what we're looking at? Something?
I thought he said...
Wait, Brad, go ahead.
That wasn't my, my exact thought, and perhaps I didn't iterate it well enough. We would say, and I'm just using $57 here, or, let's use 55, easy number. If, you know, a residential house would only use, say, 5,000 gallons, their sewer bill would be 22.50, which is half of that cap. And so whatever, wherever you fall in there, you would be charged the prorated portion of that cap to not be, to not be dinged to the full boat flat charge on the lower end. She would slide through it, gallon for gallon, up, up to that cap level, and then above that, you would still be at that cap.
Mr. Coles?
What he's trying to explain to is when you get up to the cap, the cap will, that's as much as you'll pay, you won't pay anymore. So the lower people that have the lower amount will pay a certain rate, and continue up until you get to the $53 and some odd cents, and then that's as far as you would go.
Right.
Am I right? Brad?
That concept is absolutely correct.
Yeah.
The, the caveat to doing it that way, though, would be that $53 is going to go up pretty decently, seeing as half the city uses less than 10,000 gallons. So that 53, I know I said 57, that was completely thin air. It might go up $2, it might go up $10, it might go up $20. So your, your flat might be 75 a month for sewer. You don't really know, 'cause you have to recoup the money that you're...
Losing on the other one.
You're losing on the other end, you have to recoup at some point on, on the other side of the scale. It's, it's not, it's not perfect in, in any sense, but, you know, it is a way to help the lower-end user from that substantive fee.
There's a motion on the floor, was a second, but now we change your motion?
Because the second... The secondary did not agree to the amendment to the motion, so their first motion is still on the table, is it not?
Yes. So I don't have a second on motion now?
No, you have an existing motion on the floor, which lady or somebody tried, you tried to amend, the secondary did not agree, so the original motion is still on the floor as it was stated.
Okay. Could I, could I amend that motion, old mayor?
Only with the consent of the person who did the second, which is Mr. Cadella, who said no.
Read the motion, please.
The motion was to leave the sewer rate the way it is with usage charge and not a flat rate.
Is that the way it is now? It's not the way it is now.
Based on water usage.
But it's also a flat rate?
Yeah, well, there's always a $2.70 charge that's, we call it the fixed rate.
So is that what you're saying, is to leave it as it is now? And leave out the other language? We have a service charge plus...
3,000 rate.
I'll strike my motion. I'm, you know what, there's so much confusing up here now, I'm totally lost myself. Because, I'm sorry, you know, we talk, basic uses, then we talking a five-tier, you know, I just don't know which direction to go. I like to, I like Brad's idea, I really do.
Mr. Police?
I'd like to make the motion to go with the tier rate on the sewer rates, the way you have here, for the businesses and industrial and whatnot.
Just point of order, Mr. Chairman. You just can't arbitrarily withdraw a motion. Again, not without the consent of the secondary. So that motion is still on the floor. Now, you can vote it down if you want and substitute it with another motion.
Okay, let's take a roll call on that motion.
And just so everybody understands, as I understand the motion, it's basically to keep the system as it is today, to reject staff's proposal for the flat rate system on the sewer. That's the only decision you're being asked to make. Do you agree or not agree with the proposal for the flat rate on the sewer? And the motion is no, to keep it as it is.
Call the roll.
Call the roll. Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Lewitin?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Coles?
No.
I make the motion that we direct staff to develop a bicam, a bilateral rating structure where there is a charge per 1,000 for sewage for light industry and food services, with flat rates for sewers for light industry and flat rates for, for food service, and that we have, we have a cap rate for individuals, that we have a rate per 1,000 for the first 10,000, and then it's capped. And I'm not saying at what price. The staff will, will determine, give some examples when they come back for final approval. Okay? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Question?
Questions? Question, the question I have is, is you're saying that you're going to cap people who have low rate at a much higher rate than you are now?
No.
Can that be?
No, if, if, for example, they kept the rate at $53.21, instead of it being a flat rate, it would be a cap rate, and people would pay under that amount, would pay $5.31 and 1 mil per 1,000 gallons.
Oh, okay, okay.
But they would be capped. But because Maggie said to achieve parity with expected revenue, that will have to float. So my proposal is what I said, with the ability of staff to come back with amended numbers.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second, all in favor?
Question?
A question?
Okay. The way I understood Mr. Wilson speaking about the cap, is that there's a cap, and let's say 10,000 is the cap, if you, if you use less than 10,000, you're gonna pay less. But once you hit 10,000, then what happens? Do you just pay the flat rate, no matter how high you go? Is that right, with your usage? Okay, thank you.
Alderman Schork?
And are you speaking about residential only for that?
Thank you.
I have a motion on the floor, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Call, roll.
Call, roll.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Motion carries. That's it on the water, thank God. The staff have the direction?
Yes, sir, we do.
You do have the direction? Well, I think maybe you might have to tell me what the direction is. Okay, next item is the, let me find it. They propose amendment to the ordinance of 06-051. Brad, wanna take us through that?
Sure, the memo itself, I think, hopefully explained it pretty well. The administration fee in the sanitation fund has been the same for over four years now, set at 80 cents. And during that time, the costs in the finance department and on the city hall side of things have increased more than zero over the past four years. And so this is just in an effort to, we went back and looked at the original, when this fee was first put into place, and then what the subsequent budget numbers were proposed to be. The first year was 80 cents, the second year was 87 cents, and I believe the year after that proposed was 95 cents, which if you went back and looked at BFI's rates, it did trend along with 5%. However, upon reviewing this particular ordinance, it was noticed that the ordinance was very strict on the 80 cents instead of the 5%. So we were not able to go through and raise the administrative fee at that time to the levels that we thought they... levels that we thought they perhaps should have been raised to. So this is just in an effort to fix what we believe to have been the original intent of the language, albeit four years after the initial contract was let and over two years after this particular ordinance was passed.
Mr. Police?
I got a question, Brad. All right. You're talking about the 5% going up to $1.04. Does that mean the year after that is going to go up another, you know, another 20 cents or what's?
Well, actually, at the end of April this year, our contract with Allied Waste is up and we're going to be entering into negotiations with them at some point here in the near future to determine what our rates will be. And so this 5%, at this point, I can't tell, I don't even have a clue as to where it's going to go because I don't know what our rate with Allied Waste is going to be.
So I have a question out. Wouldn't it be best to wait until we negotiate a new contract if it's winding down? Why are we going to spin the wheel with this when we got a contract that's up at the end of the year or this year?
Try not to think of it as a set in stone number. Think of it as an administrative fee. So that administrative fee is a percentage. That percentage varies based upon the costs we pay for the Allied Waste contract. So instead of changing the number every year, you just say 5% and that number gets automatically adjusted with the raising costs of the contract. So it wouldn't make any sense to wait.
Mayor, you have a question?
Holding to the principle to keep it simple, I think the understanding that I have of this is it applies to all two flats and all single-family units pay the cost of services plus 5%. But what does the language in the middle mean? Or refuse otherwise located on the lot occupied by such building? It makes absolutely no sense to me. Maybe a greater mind than I can explain that. And probably the simplest thing is just take the language out. Isn't the intent here, two flats and single-family pay cost plus 5%?
You know, to be honest with you, Mayor, I hadn't really read the middle language in there too much. I was mainly focused with the last three words there. I know we do, I believe in our system, we do have a fee for dwellings that consist of more than two flats, such as if we build any apartment buildings or condos or four flats or anything to that effect. So my best summation to that would be speaking to units greater in size than two commingled units, but not wanting to iterate every different instance within the town.
I'd recommend we approve this, but perhaps when it comes back to council, we could clean up the language a little bit.
Yeah, probably we'd focus on the 5% and then just ask the attorney for the proper wording.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this. Second?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks. Next on the agenda is citizen survey result report and recommendation. Who's taking this one? Brad or Jeff?
Hopefully, this will be the least controversial issue tonight. As you know, we sent out a citizen survey in the utility bills quite some time ago for the year ending 2007. We got those results back a couple months ago. Staff finally had time to compile the, I think it was a little over 800, 800 surveys were returned. We came pretty close to meeting our goal of 25%, which is pretty good. If you took a look at some of the numbers included in the packet, it seems that the Wooddale residents think we're doing a pretty good job from the numbers, so that's a good thing. We did spend a little bit of money this time around with the survey on an incentive program to encourage residents to participate. We did spend a little bit of money there and staff is recommending continuation of the program, but possibly next year with the program not to do the incentive and see what type of participation we get without the incentive.
Any questions on that? Mr. Winger?
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. Just a couple of comments. Thank you for pulling together the numbers as well as the quantity responding. That helps give us a sense of what we're looking at. And then going forward, you know, just something to keep in mind, when I went through the survey, it seems like we were a little light on open-ended questions, so if we can try and come up with a way to prompt them a little better. On previous surveys, I got a lot of value out of seeing, you know, more comments from residents. I have more, but I think Mr. Wilson wants to be recognized.
Mr. Wilson?
As I'm sure you're all aware, having seen the survey yourself, there was a comment section at the bottom of the survey. For the purposes of this report, however, we did not transcribe all of the residents' comments into here. That is something that if you would like to see us do either verbatim or more capsized form, more punchless, you know, such as grade separation, traffic control, I don't know, brush pickup, something like that, we could possibly do punchless like that or we could key them all verbatim over the course of the next month or two if that would be the wish.
If I may?
Continue.
I don't feel we need verbatim, but I've used the open-ended responses on more than one occasion when I'm up here making, you know, thinking about what the community wants or needs. So it would be really helpful to get at least a sense of each of the responses and that.
I think the easiest way to get you that information because it's quite extensive. Actually, almost everybody that completed a survey wrote something in the open-ended comment section. What we can do is just digitally scan that on a disk so we don't have to type it all out and we can just give you a CD-ROM or a PDF file and that'll have all the comments on it.
That would be fine, yeah. That'll work as long as everyone else is okay with it, yeah. I'd like that. And then lastly, is it possible, Mr. Murmurs, to come back with us at some point with some, you know, maybe some conclusions drawn in areas where you feel we need to focus on some potential proposals on how to make things better or keep things the same?
Yeah, we plan to get more specific with the numbers. We just finished this now, so we thought we'd bring this to you.
Sure.
We were going to break it down, you know, in more detail by wards and things to that effect, so.
Okay.
We'll give you some more reports in the future.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Uzio?
Just want to make one comment on shopping opportunities. I see fair to poor, we're at basically, what is it, 54%. If we're looking to increase sales tax revenue, I think we should look at those, the shopping opportunities. 54% of the community thinks it's fair to poor. I think we should develop our businesses.
Mr. Brad? I'll make a motion to file staff recommendation to this. This motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. I'd just be consider future meeting. CY Press funding report. Anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn the finance committee. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm calling a five-minute break. I'm sorry.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Okay. I'm calling to order the Public Works Committee meeting of July 24, 2008. Will the Minutaker please reflect, same members present, I declare a quorum. I'm going to make a motion to approve minutes dated July 10, 2008, pointing out that I'm making a motion on the revised version put before us tonight, which states that item number three, there are no punch list items remaining. To clarify that. And so I make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number four, report and recommendation on the Emerald Ashbore Action Plan. And I thank you for putting this together. Couple of questions, or actually, Mr. Kramer, why don't I let you give an overview and then we'll go ahead and ask questions if needed?
Thank you, Alderman Winger. Staff was asked to present a proposed Emerald Ashbore Action Plan. The copy draft that you have in front of you is that proposed plan. I'm just going to highlight a few topics on there that I think are noteworthy from that, focusing mainly on that the plan was drafted with the direct involvement of the Illinois Department of Agriculture and using their guidelines for that. Some other cities are, like cities are using the same format, would be Wilmette and Lombard. Wilmette is a city that has currently Emerald Ashbore and Lombard, as of today, does not have Emerald Ashbore. The city of Wooddale does not currently have any Emerald Ashbore infestations to date. There was a question about tree inventory. That was one of the main focuses of the plan itself, was to get this GIS survey done. We are 95% done with it, but we are done with the ash species portion of it and those numbers are included in this action plan. As you can see, we have 353 ash trees, there are street trees in the city, public areas, street ash trees, 269 green, 84 which are white, and that's basically 13% of the population. If you look at other cities throughout the Chicagoland area, you might see as high ash trees go to 26% of the population. So in all actuality, Wooddale is not as in bad shape as some other cities may be. The next focus after the GIS presentation was the staff goal of getting trained to deal with Emerald Ashbore. Main focus on was identifying Emerald Ashbore. In working with our subcontracted current arborist that we have, he has come out to identify areas for us in the past. Right now, he's in the process of training for staff members from city services to be licensed as arborists in the state of Illinois and that process basically involves about a 12-week class that's taught at city services and split up. And then at that time, there's a testing process. Once that testing process is completed, they pass, then they are then certified arborists within this state. And then going back to the compliance agreement that we've applied for within Illinois Department of Agriculture, we then can notify them that we have a suspected tree. So all these items are laid out in this action plan. I could go into more detail as far as debarking. Basically, all that is, is our inspection process for the Emerald Ashbore insect itself. You take a section of a tree that you suspect has Emerald Ashbore, they take a draw knife, remove the bark from that, and then you take some samples and then send that in the Illinois Department of Agriculture and they come back and whether or not the presence of the insect or not, you will have some visual clues on it. But right now, we are requested by the state for this compliance agreement to send in samples for that. And then the other, only other noteworthy item...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Kramer. Oh, you're okay. Keep going. Okay, thank you.
Identify a certified wood processing site. In the quarantine area that Wooddale is currently in, there are sites listed that this wood, this Emerald Ashbore identified wood, needs to be taken to if such a tree is found in the city. We cannot just chip it up ourselves and then leave it ultimately on site. There is a processing site that's per the compliance agreement and we must take it there. That closest site to us is Behanian Sons, which is in Lombard, so it is close, it's within the quarantine area. Our subcontracted tree company, MDL Tree Service, is also part of that compliance agreement. Winkler Tree Service, who does our brush removal, is also part of that compliance agreement as well. So as far as the state and the city of Wooddale, we are in compliance with their agreement with Emerald Ashbore and I'm hoping that this document is a good starting point going into the future if by chance Emerald Ashbore is or will come to the city of Wooddale.
Thank you. Alderman Coles?
John? I have an ash tree in my yard and we treat it every year. And you have to be, it says right on the instructions that look for a hole that's about an inch in diameter, and that's where they get in. And then they go up the tree. And you've got to do, you've got to spray the roots and you take the diameter of the tree and so many ounces of this stuff per inches of it. And a tree grows approximately three inches a year. So we got, now it's 54 inches in diameter around, so it's getting pretty big. But they don't, you won't be checking them on private property unless you're requested, right? I'm just curious. I don't want ours checked because we check it all the time, but...
Right now, we've made no provisions for private property...
That's all right.
Trees, ash tree inspection. If we do notice in the Parkway Tree Ordinance, there is some verbiage in there that states that if a city employee notices an ash tree with suspected Emerald Ashbore insect, death top of the tree, some suckers along the trunk, then we may investigate, there is language to say that.
They eat the leaves on the top, too. They eat the leaves just like the marsh do.
Couple of questions. First, a point of clarification just for myself. It sounds like there's four people, four staff members, working on certification for being an arborist?
That's correct.
And then when do you think they will actually get their certification estimated?
Sure. Currently, the test will be in Downers Grove in November. So our goal is to have the four staff members taking that test in November.
Okay. And then, but currently, we have, we use, we contract for that service and we don't have an in-house, right?
Correct. We do not have an in-house arborist right now. We have a grant, there's a grant through the state of Illinois that we have an individual, Mark Dunhaman. He is actually our arborist that comes out, not only teaches the class, but he also inspects our trees that we have. He's also the one doing the GIS survey for us, all of which is part of a grant the city is not paying for.
Nice. Okay, thank you. Next, on the area, the fifth subtopic down on the action plan page, we talk about developing ash tree population reduction plan. And, you know, it's my view that it just seems aggressive to try, it sounds like we're trying to take out all the 78 ash trees in Parkway's within the next two years. Do I understand that correct?
Correct. That's absolutely correct.
Okay. In my opinion, I just feel it's too aggressive and that there's areas where we need to replant Parkway trees that have nothing there. And 78 trees and we don't even know that they, they don't have it right now that we know of. And as long as we watch them, I just feel that as long as we keep an eye on it, let's not take down these mature trees unless they're dead or dying, then I can see it. Yes, Mr. Kramer?
As stay in that paragraph, it's 78 ash trees in poor or declining health. The part of the GIS program that we've been working on is to rank all the trees in the city, street trees in the city, in health conditions, size conditions, and then develop a plan not only for pruning purposes, ultimately down the line to develop a pruning guide so we go out to bid for street pruning if need be, but also to determine the health of those trees. And in order to do that, as far as the Emerald Ashbore is concerned, any tree that is suspect as far as in poor, declining health is more susceptible...